Please turn me with the political.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. And welcome to our City of Depot Bay Council meeting, June 18th, the 24th. Kim, would you take your role, please?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Beasley?
Here.
Councilor Mestalla?
Here.
Councilor Wret?
Here.
Councilor Watson?
Here.
Councilor King?
Here.
Mayor Short?
Here.
Councilor Soffin?
Here.
Um, under changes and additions to the agenda, I do have an addition, um, under new business, we'll add the panel's resignation for discussion on number seven. Is there any other changes or additions to the agenda? Does everyone have a chance to review the consent agenda this evening? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Are we in that motion?
A second.
It's been moved to second to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, we have an ordinance three four nine dash twenty four. Kim, would you address that for us?
Oh, yes. Um, so, uh, as you all probably know, because I understand that it was sent to you at a later date, we received some public comment on this from Councilor Beasley, who can address this at any point. But one thing I did look at this real quickly, and while the Supreme Court does uphold, a lot of that is from my US, I did go through some quick looks at the other city ordinances and codes, and we can't, as you all know, we can't control content of any sign. We can't say what can be on a sign or what can't be on a sign. But what we can do is according to all of these things on city, according to codes from state or City of Portland, Louisville, Wesleyan, there are precedents that we can set, like you could say how long they can be up, when they need to come down, how big they can be, and et cetera. My focus was originally, I saw, let's focus on keeping things right away, which could be all of our corners and stuff like that. And it would be taken a blanket approach and what that looked like. Like this, the council, and I can come back with another revise based on what these other cities are doing. The council does get to say, and I thought they didn't, but you can actually, like I said, on private property, dictate how long the signs are kept up when they come down. All the cities do. So I would be happy to come back and relook at this and, um, review another version on it. But it'll essentially do the same thing, but a little more make it clear that we're not addressing the content. We're not overseeing the content. We don't care what it says. We just care that it has to be in particular sign. And election laws do say to follow your city's ordinances.
As of right now, is there a limit on how long the signs can be up?
None at all.
Under the terms of, yes, or is?
Well, there is a limit, but it's also can be argued against it explicitly.
Okay.
But it is in there, but we need to do something.
Yeah, I, I think this is good. I don't think, I mean, we don't talk about content at all.
No.
So we need, we could make sure in our motion or in our discussion that we're clear on that. But I, I think this is a pretty good sign. The sizes are reasonable. And, um, the limitations of one property is, is reasonable.
And this is based off of a couple other cities' codes, so it's not, this one isn't as detailed as others are. That's really the work for let's update the land use zoning code signs. This was just designed to fill some gaps, I guess, until we do that.
Excuse me, Mayor, are we in a, uh, are we in a, a public hearing? This is a public hearing. This is not a, what is this?
If the council wishes, we do not have to call the public hearing. The council could say, can we bring this back with more attention? Otherwise, you do, you would want to call.
That's what we were getting to.
Right. So it's really up to the council's pleasure if you want me to review, or could I just want to let you know that based on the feedback, that it wouldn't hurt to take another look at it, look at some other, the way they wrote specifically regarding to, let's do, signs and things like that. So we can certainly, the council has pleasure to amend the agenda and not deal with this. And bring it back.
Yes.
So what are we doing here?
I'm gonna recommend that we delay and have, uh, our administrator redo this. I will look at it based on all these other codes that I saw and try to be a bit more specific, making sure that it knows we are not addressing content. We're addressing what we're allowed to address, which is time and size and how many.
Your Honor, may I add to that? Uh, I think it's absolutely imperative that when we write laws, that our lawyer look at the law that we are writing.
Absolutely.
And from what I understand, this has not been reviewed by our council.
So then she can do that.
And I do want to say this to what's been presented here, is I believe this is all wrong. I think this is a, the wrong well.
It is something we are going to bring back to council.
Then you say.
I'd like to underscore conflict of interest on this topic.
And how we have a comment for our interest.
Okay. We're going to delay this until we have a reworking. Uh, we've got a second reading of the, um, ordinance number, let's see, the water hardship, ordinance number three four eight dash twenty four, City of Depot Bay, and ordinance.
Excuse me, Mayor, but do we not have to officially table a discussion?
I mean, we're just delaying it until it comes back.
But we started discussing it already. So.
Oh, okay.
Would we not have to officially table a discussion to a future date?
If the council agrees to, um, leave that, I mean, you don't have to do a motion, which can. Do you want to go on, or do we don't?
And this is the first I saw any of this, though I haven't had a chance to do any research or anything on it. And I would certainly like to go back and particularly freedom of speech type issues and those kinds of things. So I, I'm not comfortable with looking at this today, so I would say we can table this item until a future, a future date.
Yeah. And I do want to let you know that this was reviewed by an attorney. This wasn't ours.
I'm sorry, what?
It was reviewed by an attorney for another city.
By an attorney for another city?
But it wasn't ours.
Okay.
An organ city.
Well, that doesn't make any.
So, so we're gonna table this till a future date, till a future council meeting?
Yes. But usually if you table something, it would be to a, um, a certain sort. I don't think we probably have to do that.
So it's just gonna come back to us whenever?
Yes. More than likely. It depends on whatever, on research.
Yeah.
Okay. On to ordinance three four eight dash twenty four, City of Depot Bay, and ordinance of the City of Depot Bay amending chapter fifty-one, water of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Depot Bay, Oregon, and adding a new building policy section. Uh, is there a motion to accept reading this ordinance by title only? Follow that. It's been moved to second read ordinance number three four eight dash twenty five by, twenty four by title only. This is the second reading, so I'll open for discussion. Any other changes, uh, that you might be?
Uh.
Yes.
Um, in section F where it says hearing, uh, the notice is described by subsection C. Um, I'm not sure that there's anything in subsection C that talks about a notice abolition in section E. Um, so that would need to be corrected if I'm wrong, but, or if they.
I'll go check that.
So that's in section F. And then, um, I noticed the emergency declaration is still on this document. It's in our package. So, um, we definitely need to remove the emergency declaration as well.
You know how many times I, I swear I don't want, I hope I didn't correct, you could get wrong on, I just removed that. It'll be pulled and enforced in fact after thirty days.
Where are the, are there changes or additions to this ordinance three two, three four eight dash twenty four? Is there a motion to accept the ordinance as presented? What changes that council is making?
I'm looking to accept the ordinance with the changes made.
It's been moved in a second to accept the adoption of ordinance three four eight dash twenty four as submitted. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kim, thank you for putting this all together.
I, I do want you to know that in between, so I have done some research on some of the other programs we talked about, Devin. So it's not coming to you soon, but there's really interesting things that cities are doing that you don't like.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Let's move on to our committee reports, emergency preparedness.
Okay. Um, we had our, um, emergency preparedness meeting on the day of June at the community center. I think it went really well against Samantha Buckley, and we had with, uh, Lincoln County. And then we also had the, uh, we had Trix, uh, Lexi, how with the, um, Riggins, uh, sanitary district, talk to us about, um, what to do, um, for emerg- emergency and afterwards. And both talks were very interesting, I think. I think we have a good turnout. We're looking to do something similar that committees want to get together to determine what that works like and when. I think probably having it on a beautiful day in June is not the best, you know, to do that. So we're looking, so what we'll talk about, but maybe something like, um, maybe not yet, but maybe some March, something like that. Um, I think that her program is really good, but we've heard a lot about caspades in Portland. I'd like for her to talk to us in that meeting about different hazards, not just caspade, but different things going on. Um, Karen and Kathy and I went to tour the Hatfield Science Center. They have an amazing building. Um, they, um, have room above the roof for, have a cache for nine hundred and twenty people, where they can survive for about, I think, you think about ten days when they're open, they'll be rescued.
Recording the recording.
But, um, there was a really good tour. One thing that impressed me was within the cache, they have a container, and it says, "Open me first." And what that means is you open that first, and it gives you, it has a manual that gives you all the instructions, how to do and where to go. And the person that opens that first is pretty much the leader, until, you know, some other leader comes over, some decisions made. But I thought that's something we've never heard of. Um, I'd like to thank Jen for giving us the tip on this. This was a very worthwhile, um, tour. And then she, um, uh, the person that would talk to us, her name is, uh, Semen, um.
Molly?
Molly. Yes. Thank you, Semen Molly. And she's going to, you know, be sending the manual. They go back to set up cash. So I thought that was really good. And, um, that's not it. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Joyce.
Sure.
Jack, do you want to sum up about the harbor?
Jack O'Brien, representing our representation this evening, um, we, I think that, uh, Kim and I should, uh, we're gonna bring it, bring up on the agenda, the guidebook operations, next, next week there, isn't it? Um, at our meeting. And basically, we're, some of the topics under that would be the parking for guideposts and their client, uh, obeying the signs around the city, like the one at the harbor that says no traders who are on Port Huron Street on this point. And also fish cleaning, um, operations, where they're gonna do it, how they're gonna dispose of the carcass.
Jack, how do they do that now? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Uh.
Yes.
I was about to say, any questions? Yeah, keep going. Um, they should be cleaning fish down here and then putting them in the dumpster. They could take them back out and dump them like, uh, the charters do. But I believe most of them are either getting rid of them in the dumpster now. Is that right?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah. So, and that's, that's okay. But if they bring that fish over to the other side, you see.
Then we haul them.
Then it's gotta be hauled.
Mayor, if I could just say one thing, that, uh, putting these carcasses in a dumpster is scandalous to a degree because the smell, uh, for the residents of that South Florida area, it is overwhelming with the power of.
Am I back in the harbor thing?
I, I, I don't know what the answer is. Maybe the committee can look at that.
Well, this is, this is something that has come up again and again, especially in the hot summer months. And, uh, I know that, uh, Brady and Harvard asked, who tried a number of different, uh, odor masking materials and sprays and what have you. It, it is, it's a work in progress, I guess. Uh, and I understand, you know, which direction being such a news, it can be pretty obnoxious of the topic there, but, uh, that's something we can, we can, uh, examine, having them taken up and done. But then we have to figure, figure out, okay, how are we gonna, how are we gonna do that? Or how they're gonna do that without tying up the, the dock.
Jim.
So these are, um, business rules, and they should have business laws.
Right, yeah. And that's something that we were also discussing with staff here.
But they also are probably taking advantage of the annual mortgage rather than paying daily. And it's actually really cheap. It's like a hundred dollars.
Well, exactly. And that's something else that we.
Yeah, that, I would like you to look at that, see if, if this should be different than an individual in terms of annual pay.
Do they actually mortgage them?
Not mortgage, I mean annual launch.
Launch fee, launch fee, yeah, yeah.
I didn't mean mortgage, yeah, annual launch.
See, one of the things is, most of the guideposts are like six packs.
Yeah.
Six passenger. Um, so you've got the tow vehicle with the, uh, the guy, that's the seventh person. And then you've got six other vehicles.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, there's something that we could also think of discussing is, okay, do we charge them for six people? You know, because they're a guideboat and they got other, they almost always have six people on board? Or do we leave it? And when I say, this, this is a discussion, to, you know, the results of which we would, we'd like to, we'd like to, of course, the city council will make the decision. But, yeah, so there's.
Thank you.
There's a lot of issues that have all of a sudden surfaced. Well, not all of a sudden, but.
Have been challenged.
And the redundant too, these.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That would be great.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just not, can, Parks? Kim, do you want to speak with Parks?
A little bit.
Do you want to do salmon? Or do you want to?
Well, both. It looks like I'm in Harvard.
You're it.
On, on the Parks, uh, and if you can really help me a little bit on this one. We have a meeting coming up, uh, so far, not tomorrow.
Oh, come to my seat.
Oh, excuse me.
That went to you.
Well, we have a, we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow, uh, on Parks. Uh, we have a pet, I didn't say that.
Yes.
Yes, on the twenty ninth. And so, uh.
Oh, sure.
I'm not sure if, if our meeting is going to be Thursday or at least.
It's gonna be the twenty sixth. They all, the, I, I asked the Parks Commission what they wanted to do, and most of them wanted the twenty sixth next week and stayed at Park.
Okay, that's kind of what I know about what's going on in Parks and to it. So, but we are, it looks like we're gonna have some fun and, and on the salmon enhancement, uh, that's going on great. Vinnie will be in town. We have a meeting on the twenty ninth. And, uh, got a lot of dentists that have been doing it, raked up and, uh, hopefully everything's gonna work out. I wish we had a little bit more room for, for, for everybody to be out there on July thirteenth. But I'm sure we'll have to do. Does anybody have any questions about the Parks or the salmon enhancement committee? Probably don't have the answers at all.
And you're here, we appreciate it.
I'm the only one here.
Yeah. What's his name?
Oh, there she is. I'm sorry.
I apologize for that.
Uh, Kim, um, have a question issued on the twenty ninth. I think I'm meeting with salmon enhancement committee. What time is that?
Five o'clock.
It's, it's the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Friday the tw- that's okay, Friday the twenty eighth.
Thank you.
And it's a five o'clock.
I'm waiting for the agenda for me, then I'll send it out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I truly apologize. I didn't say, it's okay.
I will open the floor for any public comments this evening. Kim, can you give us an update on the, um, city property donation?
I, I can give you an update on both of them at the same time.
Okay.
Um, just thought we were just waiting for the type of report and that, so the things that, um, our city attorney said we should get, which is the report, and then he said, hey, which type of company will work with the people to get the proper documents that they need to, to show this. Our city engineers had taken, we did walk, we did walk the property. Um, there's a little revealing there, and we were trying to figure out where the heck the house was, where it could have possibly been on that property, and Brady wasn't around, but, um, he didn't, you know, he didn't express any concerns or anything like that. Uh, we do want to, we did want to talk to Brady and I'll wait with him because I heard something about some lines crossing some other property. So we need to figure that out, but Brady unfortunately wasn't available that day, so we'll talk to him about that, but.
Okay.
So everything looks good.
Um, there was a, like, a, a environmental assessment?
Um, Brady, um, one of the concerns was whether, how much of it, do we have environmental workers? We know there was a fire. Did they have anything else that we should? I mean, what would, what would, I'll talk to you about it to find out what we should be looking for.
Right.
Um, it isn't, you know, there was no, just the house, then there may not be.
Fuel, oil, and insectic systems are the, the big concern.
Yeah, right. And whether, I mean, I got there as an underground tenant. The only concern that I really had expressed was that there were water and sewer lines falling across the property that seemed to have a house.
Right.
That could be an issue, you know, that.
Could be an issue, yes.
Yeah, so, so we'll get that on now, but they're just, they're doing the, they're doing the legal side.
Mayor, do we have a valuation of this?
No, not yet. That's what we're waiting to get with that on there.
And then Gregerson?
Um, Gregerson, I did speak to him there. I mean, he's a judge. Uh, he was very nice. Just found me very interested in having the city acquire that property. I kind of mentioned this to you guys last night. I think we pretty much have the update. He said it would really come down to price. Um, but I do have somebody looking into getting a estimate, like what the market, you know, kind of like that. Um, if we decide, he did say that if he learned to hurry, um, so if we decide, and there's a couple land acquisitions, rent is coming up, um, I heard from our grant director yesterday, so I guess there's a couple coming up. So he said if we need to wait on a grant, he's more than willing to do that. So, um, he's just settling on the price, is what it does. And then if the council wishes to buy the whole thing, or they just wanted to buy a piece of it, um, that would be entirely up to, to you.
Gregerson is the property east of.
The harbor, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, um, maybe I should just say Harbor property?
Have, have we determined if it's in near the Green District?
It is. It is, absolutely it is. And, you know, one of the, one of the lots closest to the, the dock, Oxide, was, and designed as part of the Harvard master plan to provide more parking and one way through that coast, which.
Yeah.
I think given, given the challenges we have, which I hear about all the time, um, why not? It would be nice.
And we've also had to get easements for the dredging of the, uh, the dam from that property.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and, you know, they, they were more than, you have to have a city story. I think that's about it.
Oh, Brady, thank you. Randy, Mr. Fuller, let me add up. Your favorite application to join the emergency preparedness committee? Love your reasoning. Wonderful, you have a wonderful background. It's all, it would fit in well with this, or here. Um, any other, any questions for Mr. Howard?
Did you really organize the dance for those people?
I was part of the team, yes, actually in Manila, was part of a team for nine million.
Of what?
One, four days in.
Oh, my.
Bigger than, bigger than the Olympics, over, over five days.
Wow.
I mean, I did not do it myself. I was on the team, you could see that. But the neat thing about those, all of those events, almost exclusively were primarily all volunteer-supported, except for a few not, uh, including myself, that would be.
Wow.
So, yeah.
That's a good background there.
Good question. Um, first of all, I appreciate you coming to our emergency preparedness meeting. Thank you very much. It looks like you have a wonderful background. I'm just curious, why you moved to Niko Bay? What, what was your interest?
The, I just love the coast. Yeah, I just love the, love the coast. I love the size of the town. Um, I like that it's a little bit further south than the busiest tourist kind of area, uh, yeah, so.
You've got a great background, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. Any other questions? Okay, we have a ballot, so take a seat while you fill out our ballots.
Um, you can put your, your, um, thank you. Just not trying to be rude.
Okay, together.
Okay.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
In Council King, next time you do something with the, um, caches, he would like to be involved and provide some muscle for you.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't know about muscle.
We, we do as many muscles as we can.
Well, we don't, you know, it's time to run to you again.
I had to recruit my best, but. He was awesome. That's great.
Yes, I'll hear that. Is there a motion to accept the ballot as presented?
I have a motion to accept this presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the ballot as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Looks like you are hired on to a emergency plan committee. Their next meeting is on June twenty fourth, and that's here at City Hall at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay.
We'll get you to work.
Yes, well, I get a, you have my.
Yes, we'll get you an agenda, and promptly, um, you can go online and read some of the minutes as to what they've been working on and what's kind of that technical.
You know, so the recordings are posted, except for the last one. The last one is going to be up the end of the week, probably tomorrow.
Oh, Randy, thank you, Randy. Okay, um, oh, one of my favorite subjects, the Navy Service and Sanitary District. So I worked with, um, Courtney with the Governor's Office first, uh, Courtney Platters is her name. And then she referred me on to Katie, uh, what was Katie's last name?
Anytime.
With Katie, Paramack?
Yeah.
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 She referred me on to the, she's from the Oregon Consensus. And she sat down with, uh, myself and several other people in Gleneady Service District and came up with this, um, review of what's going on. It did say anywhere in here that Gleneady Service District just tried to sue us three times. And it's been a very contentious, uh, relationship, but we do need to, uh, move forward with, uh, talking. Can I?
Can I ask you?
Yes.
Why? Um, we, we had, you know, confidential, and, you know, the consensus of the council was no, no, no. We did not want to, um, until they came up with a proposal, perhaps only reconsider, we've never seen anything. So I feel like we were, we're being sort of forced into a process that we haven't agreed to.
That's what we're doing tonight, talking forward.
But, um, I don't understand how it went from no, no, and no to say, oh, But um I don't understand how it went from no, no, and no, to say, oh, I'll sit down with you.
We've got to move forward, Randy.
Well, we do move forward, we said, we understand that it might take more than five years, but we didn't wanna spend the nine million dollars that it's gonna take to, we want, we want the uh the facility, wastewater facility to serve Depot Bay for fifty years and not have to tear off Bay Street, not have to tear off.
And they're coming back with this and saying that they want to work with us. So I think we have to be open and, and at least open up conversations for them. I I really believe that, yes.
The only thing that I would like to add on this is that, why the council has committed and agreed to terminate the relationship, it will not be terminated after three years. We will have to figure out what that will look like, and that might lead to working with them, it will need needing to work with them. This, I think, is designed to work on that relationship and what that's gonna look like. That's all this is, the assessment, you don't have to agree to anything, the assessment I thought was very skewed to um Gleneady. And there was a lot of things I had concerns about, like they're not saying these will pay for the aims and et cetera, so. But at some point, we're gonna have to sit down with Gleneady.
But I, oh, I'm sorry, do not be.
No, no.
So, there's two things, right? One thing was, we made a decision as a council. And that decision was no, we do not want to extend the relationship. Um, and of course, the attorney, you know, said, well, how is the proposal considered? We said, no, we understand it's gonna take more than five years, and if that's what this is about, we need to say it and constrain it to that. They're thinking, oh, well, you know, I've seen in the papers, oh, well, we don't have a space, we're gonna build a view, we're gonna expand Depot Bay. I think it needs to be clear that no, we're not, we'll figure out how long it's gonna take and what we can do in the interim and the terms of the agreement, but none of this says that. And I'm really concerned that this is gonna be disinterstrued, and I don't like it at all.
You want agreeing to be assessment council, or you're not agreeing to that at all, what you're agreeing to, and this can be worded however you want, they're just looking for something that says the city is willing to leave.
It doesn't say that.
I understand that this is what.
It does not say that, it says.
Oh, I see, the the suggested notion, okay, so that was probably my fault, being confused.
No, it doesn't even say that the assessment process. The whole thing is not structured to make clear what the city's decision has been and that the only point of this assessment process is to figure out a path for um while Gleneady and Sanitary District finds a way to build their own facility. This says, we're gonna collaborate on a path for the continued treatment of wastewater plant, period. Doesn't say um for an interim period while Gleneady gets their own facility in place. It doesn't, it doesn't, isn't clear.
Where you can meet that motion and they have to take it or not.
So, can I just ask, who started this process? If the council said no, and that was the, the direction of the council, is we're not gonna do this. Um, I must, I have to assume that this process was started by Gleneady and, and then, and the governor got involved and said, okay, well, you guys need to kind of come together and work together.
Correct.
But, I mean, I'm in my agreement with Fran, if we said no, that's the decision.
So this was started by Gleneady?
I don't know.
No.
It, it did, well, it was in conjunction with with Gleneady. It came from the Governor's Office, this Courtney Flappers came to me and said, would you be willing to sit down and talk with this lady from Oregon consensus? Which I said I would, and this is what she came up with after talking with uh various people, including Gleneady Service District. So, they are just coming and wanting to open the door for discussions.
I would agree with Kim, but Kim, that is very skewed toward Gleneady.
Absolutely.
I don't think this is what we decided.
I know, it is not. I said, what's Gleneady gonna give to this partnership? Because it says all about the city's.
The contract in nineteen ninety eight was skewed towards him as well.
And if you read it, you can clearly, I mean, I was at that last minute meeting with you guys in the second session, and you can clearly hear that stuff coming into that report, so. The idea is, and maybe this isn't the way, but it, it sounds like this is the way, but we do, we will need at some point to sit down with them to talk about what, what it looks like going forward. And it doesn't have to be this, and we can totally say we're not permitted to do this, but some point we are, because we're gonna have to talk about how to charge him, what to charge a member, our, our city attorney's gonna need to decide all of that.
We need a whole new agreement.
Yes.
But we need to spell out what you, exactly what you just said. What are we gonna charge in the interim, we, we made it clear, recommendations, council direction regarding next steps, and what to proceed with the collaborative process as indicated, you know, so what we have to say is, um, so the direction regarding next steps is to proceed with determination of the agreement. Um, and in the interim, until the, until wastewater treatment plant is constructed by Gleneady, set new standards for um rates, or um whatever things you just said.
Communication, man.
For communication, or um.
Charging for flows.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we're not charging flows. No, no, charge, how flows are monitored and all that. It's, it's basically, like you said, it's a brand new agreement with them, it just looked very different.
But we're not, it's not gonna be a long-term agreement, we need to make that clear.
Yeah, I think there needs to be very clear limits on, you know, this isn't gonna go on forever. Because what, what I envision them doing is saying, oh, well, we've got them like this now. We've got this agreement in there, and now we'll just let it go, and let it go, and let it go, and let it go, oh, we can't get the land, we can't get the environmental approval, we can't get, we can't give, we can't.
Yeah.
That's been going on for ten years.
And, and we, yeah, thirty, thirty years, exactly, so, we need to stop. If that's the direction we want to go, and I'm inclined to believe that sort of.
And I, I was here during all the meetings and the discussion, and it was, absolutely no, no. I mean, they haven't come back with the proposal, they haven't done any of their part, they were still silent at the meeting, I mean, no.
Would you like me to get some kind of drawing for him on this, as standard to say, here's our response to this, that we want, maybe you could help craft something I can bring you to the next meeting that will stay similar to what you say and put a timeline on it? Like, like you said, uh, term of an agree, or uh, proceed with term, uh, termination of agreement, and interim, and do wastewater treatment plant is constructed. We don't know what happens.
No, we don't.
We don't really say that.
Well, maybe the, um, it's for um term not to exceed three years, and then after that, we've re- negotiated the rate again.
Okay, got it, got it.
Something like that.
Is it okay if I just reach out to Cory and, and say, help me write this, and then I'll bring it to you at the next meeting? And we'll just tell Katie the council isn't ready to make any decisions on this.
Council.
Thank you. Um, so, as a council, did we agree to, I mean, this was an interesting report, I, um, kind of like read it, I have a question about it. Did we, as the council, agree to this?
Yes.
To participate in this?
No, no, not yet, that's why we're here tonight. That's why it's coming to you tonight.
So what we did do, though, is we participated in the conversations with this organization about, I mean,
Right. No.
Kind of trying to find some papa gram.
We did not, the mayor did.
He doesn't represent the council. Hey, there is, just so you know, because it's seven month, but there's no charges, I don't really think that there is, that's not, I, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying that, you know, make sure you have the reason.
Well, should we be informed of these matters?
That's what we're doing right now.
No, but.
Well, exactly the fact.
Yeah, this is, was the council not made aware that we were being pulled into meetings to come up with a collaborative?
Does that work, no. No.
Well, we'll look into it.
Well, you know, thank you.
I mean, I, I would just say that by virtue of our participation in this agree, in this discussion with these people, we've, we've now opened ourselves up to say, oh, well, we might entertain this, where we should have said a hard no. We said a hard no when we terminated the agreement, no, we're not interested in having this collaborative discussion. And, um, you know, if you guys have issue, you need to tell us what you need, and we will negotiate with you.
No, we are not tied in. The, the mayor, no, we're not tied in.
She spent a lot of time talking to them, but she does not speak for the council.
So.
Bring brought to you now.
What, no, so the, the issue would be then, um.
The two.
To, to, no, no, the issue is to terminate any agreement from the Governor's consensus.
There's no agreement, there's no agreement.
They came to us and asked to have a conversation, that's all it is, and this was the result, was the conversations.
And those conversations were with the mayor and other city staff, or just the mayor?
Well, they talked to me and um Paul. Senator. Yes, 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 yes. Right, they would have talked to Brady, but obviously, but right, because, and I suggested they talk to Randy, and most history.
Yeah.
And be involved in it, but Paul also had ten years, so he's. They also, I believe, talked to Danielle, Mike, and Ray Alba, they just, yeah.
So I, I think if Cory is gonna drop off a letter for us to look at along those lines, I think the other, um, the other statement that somehow needs to be expressed is that, um, that the, the consensus process is only for these points that we outline in the letter.
Oh, okay.
That is, there is no.
That's the only terms you would read out of it.
Okay.
And that it should, you know, date certain, no more than three years from now, and let them renegotiate again after that.
But we're running out of time on our plan, that's just it.
Well, they're not gonna, DQ is not gonna let us stop treating waste.
Yes, exactly, I know that.
Yeah, so, so we need to, um.
So it needs to become so expensive to them that they're gonna have to develop their own, or they're basically going to
Yeah.
build a new wastewater plant here, with the, the fees that they're gonna have to pay, because if, I mean.
We don't have to land it, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to dig up Bay Street and all these other streets, it's like, right.
But, if, if that's the, the final, this DQ, you're right, they're not gonna let us stop treating it. But we should not have any involvement in any of the cost associated with any of that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, no, that is a very good question.
And, and I wouldn't even want to entertain doing that, um,
Absolutely.
unless forced to by the state, and that, and it may get to that, but at this point, it's just a, it's just a bunch of consensus trying to get us to agree to what they're, and and I, I probably would have been a hard no in even having a discussion with them, unless it was forced on us by some other.
Oh, yeah.
I, I have some, they're trying to get a discharge permit, and that's the first step, and they're trying to, the, the government won't do it. The state rarely gives out discharge permits for wastewater, and especially into the ocean, so they're doing anything they can to lobby to make this agreement happen, but they don't know any discharge. They, they don't, and they're told one side of the story, and that's.
Well, that's all, that's all we get here and there, because the issue is, out of us, out of this, they will have to work with us in three years. We will have to work with them, and I don't think we can outprice them, and DQ would let us get away with it if we can't, if they can't continue to pay to take our stuff. We're gonna be forced to do it either way. The idea is, what council rep, I think, is, let's set the terms and conditions of what that looks like, and say, that's the discussion we'll have, right, mind you, trainer? That's the discussion, but it's still. We want none of this other stuff.
It's still our intent, we, we do not want Gleneady to make wastewater, I mean, it's our ocean that's being flooded with the discharge permit from that.
Okay.
We'd have a lot less effects on our ocean if it wasn't from their wastewater.
Okay, great.
And I'm, I would say, no, they should not pay any of any of it, I mean, it's not our responsibility to pay for their wastewater.
And we, we, we only, we pay for it from where that one is.
Agreed, but we have a, we have a system that is not going to survive with the capacities that we're pushing through it. So if their capacities are causing us to have to, to facilitate.
Sure, they have to pay for it.
Exactly, we should not be on hook for any of those costs.
I'm not sure if we can do that, but I think that's something Cory can bring about.
I just got a question, does anybody know if they had even started thinking about?
They tried to get um money for a plant last, was it Gleneody, said they said no, they weren't getting it.
Their bond issue did not pass?
No, they went to Gleneody, I don't think they had a bond issue, but they went to the legislature, but they said no.
They, they did not to a bond, they tried to get one.
The legislature said no. Well, they don't have plans.
And they, they're working on trying to get a discharge permit.
They just want.
You know, it's funny, because you remember that meeting, they said they had them, but I don't know what they provided, the legislature, except they went and paid testimony.
The, the other thing that, um, they keep saying, actually, we should do this to make for each other one's time, for our attorney. Um, they keep on saying, since we paid into it, then it's ours to get to use it, and so we have to be very careful how to structure
Yeah.
our, you know, costs and stuff, so they know, you know, ownership rights to our plant.
But I think, uh, people know exactly how to do this.
Yeah.
And I would, I would bring his statement, and then we'll share, I'll just tell them, council's not ready, we'll get back to you at the next meeting.
Perfect, sounds good. Um, cost of building increased, did everyone get a chance to read the memo on that one?
That three point three percent was already put into the budget, so, um, you know, we can openly this agenda, and if you want to bet, it's just one step closer to finishing. I don't know if there was any talk about lowering it to six point one.
Your honor, I move that the, that we approve of three point three percent cost of building increase for those persons to identify and stay with it.
Say a second.
I'll be the second.
As we move to a second, to approve the cost of building increases three point three percent as presented, is there any discussion on the motion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Um, you need to, you're first, or that you passed, those reasons.
Kim, do you want to tell us about the auditor that's uh stepping forward and help us up here?
I've been knowing all this time, Chris.
Yeah, I smile.
Um, uh Tara is online, um, and she's happy to talk to the council, uh, about this, there she is. Um, we had a lovely discussion summer, uh, we, we reached out to, uh, three people, and Tara was one of the ones that was a great response. I loved my conversation with her, we talked about, I was honest with her about her challenges, and, and she, she didn't get scared away, although I do think I scared away somebody else. So, um, but I wanted the auditors to know what they were walking into, so, um, I did reach out to, uh, two organizations. Tara doesn't know this yet, but I'm sure she won't be surprised, uh, Nicole Rutherford of Coos Bay, and reached out to Wood Village, and I just got the Wood Village response, and they're res- uh, uh, resoundably supportive and positive. And one of the biggest things, if you recall, in the interwork with was communication, and I expressed that, and they all said that her communication was great. Um, so, uh, they had no reservations about recommending her, so, but there she is, if you want to talk.
I, you're welcome, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow counsel, thank you so much for having me and considering our proposal. Um, I'd be very excited to work with the city of Depot Bay, we do a lot of local governments in Oregon, and we definitely are aware of the challenges of smaller local governments that to keep up with the audits, with the really, um, complicated accounting that's required of governments, so, um, I'm pleased to take any questions if you have them.
Can you start?
Oh, absolutely, we can start, we can start this summer, actually.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, and talking with the city in summer, they said that would be a great time to start, and then we would work on more of the finalizing work on the first of the year, um, twenty twenty five, when everything's more finalized, and hopefully get caught up really quickly.
One of, uh, one of the concerns is that, uh, another agency I spoke to couldn't even begin anything until January, so, um, but, uh, I just, please tell me you guys got a proposal. I almost went to the wrong one, because I'm like, oh my gosh, so, uh, actually, uh, Tara, close your ears.
Okay.
This came in, I, I thought this would be more, um.
Oh, no, we didn't get that, that was too.
We did.
Yeah. I will send you, uh, you know what, give me a second.
How can you view her, or you?
Um, I will bring it up, so you can see it, it's public record, so I'll just bring it up, I don't know how it didn't get attached to you guys, I just.
So the question I have, um, are you aware of the difficulties that city has had in completing their audits?
Yeah, absolutely, for sure, and, um, unfortunately, we've seen it other places, too. I think it's difficult, um, especially, you know, going through the pandemic and everything that happened after, to, um, get audits done on time, and so that's one thing I absolutely love to do, is work with governments and help them get caught up, I think it's so satisfying for everybody involved. And so, actually, we have a lot of experience in doing that, and so I think I don't, um, see any. And so I actually, we have a lot of experience in doing that and so I think I don't, um, see any problems or issues. We do understand, like, looking at the past reports, the opinions and the findings and things, but, um, I think we can work with the city and how to navigate that as well.
Um, the audit proposal was right there, so why it didn't get attached to your package in the piece, but let me share this and.
And did you see the, um, audit report that was presented to us? Was it not very satisfactory?
Yes, I did.
And, um. I am still needing to get some paperwork to, uh, I know that we're finished. This part of the budget, I can concentrate on getting that stuff to summer, so I will make sure that you get all of this, but if you're looking at. Um, so much of what she put in here is standard audit language, you know, what our commitment is, what their commitment is. But then we get down to, um, a couple of the things I liked is that they don't rotate staff assigned to the engagement.
Nice.
There's a partial list of clients, Cus Bay, Wood Village, Troutdale, North Bend, Canyonville, Columbia, Durham, Horse Grove, um. Several of these, they've been to two, ten plus years, so that's actually really good. Now, I think Cus Bay, yeah, Cus Bay was a ten plus years one. And I think that could gave you their report, they said that they even still went out, but they are very happy, they just do it to keep things fresh, but they're very happy with them.
I'm not surprised about the non-rotation because I think when I read the, one of the letters of support, they said there were a few different people that came in and they had to reorient.
And I think at one point, Tara, that was probably about the same time that kept happening during COVID when things were such a mess up, would you agree, Tara?
Yeah, absolutely, for sure.
Okay, so they have had some team turnover. It's great to see some younger folks entering into the new school audit profession, so we often have new faces. Spend a little time helping the new team member understand our processes.
Right.
But what you're saying in. In the staffing that you don't, you don't rotate. Team members.
That's our goal, absolutely, so that, you know, when a, when we have a new audit, there's a huge learning curve. Learning all about the city and the processes and getting really into the detail of everything. And so what we hope is those staff can remain on that job from year to year and every year becomes easier, becomes more efficient. Um, it becomes much less drain on the city and so that's always our goal. And I'm very fortunate, I have two teams that I, um, am over as a partner. And I think the newest person on the team is maybe three years, but everybody else is over five years and up to ten years. With the firm, so we do have a lot of long-term auditors that are very experienced and knowledgeable, which is very good.
And I, I think Tara, the rotation is that, I think what she's saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that they don't move people, but you can't, if people quit.
That's true, yeah.
They, they try to keep the same people on there, but if people quit, they can't do that, so there's the team that they've put in there, Tara. Um, engagement, and then we have, uh, I'm not sure what a concurrent partner is, so maybe you can tell me what that is.
So we have four partners at our firm and part of our quality control for our audit processes is we have another partner always checking up on other partners' work. So we can all, um, produce high-quality audits within standards and so that's his role.
Tara, this is Rick Beasley.
Hi.
Uh, thank you very much for, uh, joining us. Uh, can you tell, can you describe for me what you do when you do a steady audit or how you will handle, uh, the city of Depot Bay, given that. Our, uh, this is a, a very late audit, how, how do you go about this? How do you gather the information?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Um, so the services we will provide to the city is primarily a financial statement audit. And then secondly, a compliance audit called Oregon Menon Standards, which is required of all governments in Oregon. Where we look at different compliance with laws and regulations, so those are the two main objectives. And when going back to a past audit, we would start working with the city by having, um, meetings. And going over like objectives and what we need and what they can provide and how that's easiest. We also have extremely detailed prep lists that we send to the city ahead of time for our visits. Detailing absolutely everything that we need and we use a, um. Online portal website called ShareFile. Which is a very secure online website for sharing information. Um, and so what we do is we request that before we start our work, everything on the prep list is uploaded to ShareFile. And that means when the team is scheduled to actually start the work, we can all jump in on various items and look at information. And so with both a financial statement audit and a compliance audit, what we're doing is starting with the data produced by the city. And then we are verifying the numbers and the procedures in what we were given by asking for backup. And all audits are based on sampling, we don't, um, test every transaction, but we pull samples in many different areas. We look at journal entries and bank reconciliations and payroll and bills being paid and money being deposited and how that all works. And we pull samples of all those transactions in order to look at the backup and the processes in order to verify. What is in the city's, um, financial system. And so that is a brief overview of kind of our work there.
Thank you, Tara. I am printing, I got these printed right now, but, um, if you want to scroll down here, so they talk about the training of their staff, um. And, uh, one of the things that, um, they do everything, um, electronically. So, which is kind of nice because during COVID, we had to do that, so, um. They have their ShareFile system, which I'm like refusing. Um, one of the things I really liked about is what they, uh, these value-added services. So one of the things that auditors have to really be careful about keeping some sort of separation between the city and the people that they audit, but. The fact that they're gonna be open to answer some questions that might help us with, like, for example, maybe I need to know how to do something in a supplemental budget, that's the type of stuff that can help us with, so. Um, and that is part of what you do, right, unless it's a bigger project?
Absolutely, that's one thing I really value with my clients is having close relationships with them while maintaining independence, that's really important. But city, anyone in the city is free to email or call or ask questions anytime about anything. And, um, you know, we've been at this for so long, I've been, um, municipal auditing for almost twenty years, so. Sometimes it's easier to ask me rather than doing some research because I've seen a lot. So I value those relationships and getting questions as much as you want, honestly.
Oh, and there's been a lot of times I'm, I would have loved to be able to reach out to someone.
Yeah, exactly.
To make sure that, you know, I'm reporting things, accounting for things the way that they need to be, so.
And it really helps too, because if you, um, if you have questions along the way and then those pile up over time, sometimes it becomes like too much to take care of at the end. So if you keep up on those things, we found it also makes for a much easier year in closing process.
So what I'm scrolling through right, right now is the team, um, so, uh, you'll be able to see that when I, when I get that, um. So this is where they talk about how they understand the stating, looking at our control, control, controls and how we do things. I don't know if this firm does what I experienced in the past, which we had to actually write a statement about, which, like, now cash is handled, now internal controls cash is handled, so. Um, and, uh. More of that, and she kind of explained how they do that, um. Getting there. Uh, use the city's personnel, sure, we, we are gonna have to dig in, um, and there's not a lot of that stuff, but that's just normal.
Yeah.
Uh, uh.
So has Tara worked with our CPA and just hired?
Tara, uh, Tara, can you tell the whole kind of relationship that they've had this summer?
Yeah, I've worked with Summer for many years, I worked with her when she was the finance director of the city of Hood River. And then she went out on her own to be a consultant and we've worked together many times over the years, so I really value her work, she's excellent. And she knows exactly what is needed for an audit to go well, so that's a huge benefit of the city to have her on your guys' team as well.
And one of the first things that Summer's asked me for, that I, I said I would provide her once we get through tonight. Um, is the, like, kind of like a recording of my balance sheet to see what she can look at and take, start taking a look at that. Um, up on this is the fees and, uh, Tara, would you mind explaining why the difference between the full accrual and modified cash?
Yeah, so one of my questions to the city when we chatted was, um, are you planning to stay on full accrual financials? Because full accrual governmental accounting is one of the most challenging, complicated, intricate forms of accounting that there is. There's many different bases of accounting and governmental full accrual is really, really tough and you need that expert level like Summer to be able to finish everything that goes into it. And sometimes that is very difficult and challenging and not very much value to cities, especially, um. Cities that are smaller size, even though they have a lot going on, when I reviewed your financials, I was like, wow, this is a full-service city, you guys have everything going on in your city. So one of the questions I asked was, are you planning on changing your basis of accounting, if you switch to modified basis of accounting? You still account for all of the necessary important things, but it's just a little more simple and easier to handle. And, um, what was communicated was they have, the city has to go to their bond council to see if they can do that because some of the debt requires full accrual financials. So I think once that question is answered, then, um, we can decide which way to go and then. If you do want to switch your basis of accounting, definitely reach out to me for how to do that because you do have to do that through the council with a resolution, but it's not tough.
And Tara, we did do it via a, we did a modi, we did a cash basis, so we might have to do another modification if we need to do it, we didn't do a modified cash basis, so.
Well, you can do cash basis as well if you'd like, so I can look.
We already did that.
Okay, awesome, well, that's great, yeah.
But, so the, the next thing on the agenda is what she just mentioned, is that in order to design how we need to do this to keep happy, our bond folks happy, we need bond constantly.
We need what?
So that's what we, bond council.
Yeah.
So. We have to hear from our bond holders how they want us to do this. So that's what's next on the engagement letter to do. And that was for Summer's recommendation and then Tara confirmed that this is really what we want to do, so they know how we do.
So the bonds we currently have, the bond that, that are issued out there now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are they requiring the full approval?
That's what we have to contract with the bond council upon that. That's what this next thing, the engagement letter, we, we want to say that.
And so that will determine which fee structure we're going to fit here.
Exactly, exactly.
Um, can you describe, Tara, the difference between modified cash and just cash?
Yes, so cash, pure cash basis, um, which I actually prefer over modified cash if you, if you are deciding, and I can provide some examples for you. It's on the balance sheet, you just have cash and equity. And modify, modified cash is if you have a few other things on the balance sheet, things like capital assets and loan debt. With cash basis accounting, you can still disclose those in the notes, but they're not the, on the face of the financial statements, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Is there any other, so when I put it in the budget, I just went for the estimate of the highest. And obviously, if we come in low, we'll, um, pay that. And it also includes some of our processes.
So what sort of motion do you need?
Um, uh, to prove it before with, um, contracting with Polly Rogers and then the mayor sent the document.
Your honor, I would make a motion that, uh, we move forward with contract with Polly Rogers and company to handle our, uh, audits.
Does my move to second to accept the proposal from Polly Rogers and company in order of auditing services? Um, is there any discussion on the motion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, welcome aboard, you have the.
So much, thank you, I'm really excited to work with you guys and, um, we'll definitely be in touch soon to get things rolling.
Okay, right, thanks so much, Tara.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay, so now that is the, um. Bond council engagement and, uh, we did have that one before us. Does everyone have a text to, uh, reach her this?
Yeah, I did, but if I had no context, why would that be regarding the council?
Oh, gosh, okay, it's all in the manager. Is that all this stuff is in here, the staff report isn't there? Dang it, I don't understand what's going on here.
We got hundreds. We've got others.
You got the, oh, you know what, I didn't get the staff. Oh, I think I did, it says it's already been selected. Oh, the staff report I put together was for the audit and bond, bond council, bond council. And I wrote down, um, discussion, I have to recommend, recommendation for CPA to evaluate the city's standing related to our bond. And due to the fact the city does not currently have a bond council to provide assistance, staff reached out to confirm they did the twenty twelve refinance to engage their services. The council can choose not to engage, you can choose me, for me to go out and get more. Um, the council, the bond council engagement letter is based on their hourly rates. On how much we need to use them, unless there's a special need, staff requested not to exceed amount of twenty thousand before coming back to the council for additional funds.
But they've already been engaged in it?
No, this is your approval tonight.
This is a letter of engagement.
The letter says, thank you for selecting them.
That's their standard engagement letter, until the mayor signs it, they're not engaged. They're saying, thank you for picking them up.
Slighted them over somebody else for their services.
Yes. Um, and I could have called others, there were others, but since they did the bond in twenty thousand twelve, they know us and they know the city. So it made more sense to work with somebody that knows us.
So where does it say that it's, uh. It's restrained to twenty thousand without twenty thousand?
It's not, I would ask them to amend it or tell them that we want to do this at twenty thousand and not go over that. We can actually have them put that language in here. We, remember, we've done that before, where we said not to exceed twenty thousand, that's my recommendation, um. I think the only reason at this point that we need them is just to tell us what kind of a, a goal and that shouldn't be that much, but I will know more after they.
Answer that question if there will be any more extensive need for it.
I hope not, because if you used all their rates, they're not cheap, so.
So does it say that it's like task-driven?
Does it say what?
Um, the, the tasks that they're to do?
Yes.
No, I mean, it's just open ended on what we need them to do, um, which I think we need, we don't want to specifically say the only thing we're doing is this, that's why I set the limit. That way we don't go over the limit.
But.
And you can set the limit lower if you want to say not to exceed ten thousand.
Um. And again, are we doing that through task orders that you'll. Will that be signed on, how does that?
As far as I, as, I can, what I can do, as far as I know, this is only to tell us what kind, we're only paying them right now. To tell us what kind of accrual we should be doing when they're on. If they say we need something else, I'll come back here. I hope we don't need anything else, if they say we need something else, that could not be good. So I, we just want them to tell us how we should be accounting, what kind of audit we should be doing, we do it because of bond.
So line item number one, limited scope of representation. Um, it's, it, it's very broad, it does not limit the scope, the scope there says that they can render legal advice to the city. As its counsel on public finance matters, including discrete questions related to potential warrants, so. It's a, it's a broad. It's a broad legal, um, scope.
Mm-hmm.
Specific to finance, is what it, it looks like.
Only specific to bonds, I mean, this is only, the bond council, probably Hawkins, Deloitte, you know, are experts in bonds. We know we're not gonna go out and get another bond because we're not, you know, allowed to without a voter.
No, that's not what that says, that's what it said.
But that's not saying we have to do anything, I mean, I, I. Nothing. This is broad because we don't know what we're gonna have.
Right.
But that's why we set the limit on it and then you control how much is spent and if you over that, we have to come back.
Except that, so we're entering into this agreement and then the next paragraph or the next sentence says.
To have a discussion.
When the city is embarking on specific borrowing for which there is a need for bond council, which is what I thought we were engaging in. Um, they're gonna provide another engagement letter.
If we want them to do that, correct, this is not to do, whether or not, I.
I guess I understand your scope.
You are taking, you are taking issue with a standard letter that. You are taking, you are taking issue with a standard letter that they wrote. If you want me to change something, just tell me what it is.
I think we need to say that the intent of the city is to engage so and so. They can, we can sign this, but the limited, you know, we're limiting their initial counsel to providing a um, opinion on the uh, accrual basis for which that we need to, our, our system needs to be.
Which means if we do that and we need more information for it before I can even talk to them, I have to come back to you guys to get permission. I'm not gonna.
At least be, at least be clear about what we really are asking them and other duties as assigned to be, you know.
Right now, as broad as it is, the sky's the boot about what we want. It's not under their control. It's what we want. If we only need them to answer a question for us, it falls within the limit. We set the limit. There's nothing else we need to do here.
But I would say we set the limit much lower than that.
That is entirely up to you. If the partner works on it, please understand he's at least $500 an hour, which I usually don't make that much, but I don't know, but I originally thought 10,000. We set it to 10,000. We set the limit to whatever you want.
I, it's gonna take them 10 hours to think of, or 20 hours is what you're proposing, to determine whether the bond, if they help us in the first place, is gonna take.
I have no idea how long and what they need to do to determine what we should be doing. I'm not the expert in this. You're questioning, you're questioning how they do their job. And I can bring them here to explain this to you.
No, I'm not that. But the, if we give them 20,000, they'll work up to 20,000.
They will not work up to 20,000.
I bet you they will.
But if you want to set the limit, just tell me what it is.
Well, they should give us, we should give them a task and they should tell us how much it is before. And you could approve it. We could delegate that authority. And we delegate that authority up to $10,000, up to 20, if we need to, but we don't tell them 20,000 or they'll work up to 20,000.
I disagree, but you're the council. You choose. I don't agree with that either.
I'm okay with 10. 10, not exceed 10. I think we need to move forward with it. It's important. I think that's what we're in place.
So he'll let us know if that's unacceptable? Yes. In which case I would want them to tell me what they think this requires and what they see the process is, because I, I don't know.
This just, this letter just makes it seem like it's a broad-based engagement where they have no idea what they're doing.
It is a broad-based engagement, but it needs it up to us to determine what we want.
Do they know that their primary task is?
Yes, they've talked to Summer. They've talked to Summer. They know exactly what they're needing from. When they open that can of worms, we don't know what else that is. We don't know when they open, when they uncover that rock or what that means. We don't know what else that will be. The engagements are broad for that reason, so we do, so we not exceed 10 and that. We don't anything over that. You know, I can certainly provide a report if you speak to them about what they anticipate, you know, um. But I just don't have an answer because I don't have other experience as a speaker. So we need that again.
Did I make a motion to that effect?
Yes, please.
That we had a motion.
That we, um, proceed forward with the engagement letter with an amendment to it not to exceed $10,000.
Yep.
To bond council, Hawkins, Delve, Wood.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I moved in second to accept the letter of intent from Hawkins. You know, from the, uh, as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
This is in our budget?
Yes, it is, it is now. I mean, uh, it, an estimate is put under professional service accounting and audit. It's that hundred, 90,000.
It's always in our budget.
Mm-hmm. And it's, it's in the budget now under professional services because we haven't spent it, but we're not gonna make it done by the end of the month. It's a lot to 24, 25.
Any other discussions?
All in favor say aye. Uh, can I, can you oppose?
We'll work on that and see what we can come up with.
Um, on page 36, so do I in here and I will tell them this. Um, of course, you may amend or expand the scope of our representation from time to time, providing that any such action is agreed to by each of us, memorized and self-contained there too. I'll have them do a supplement for anything. This is initially what we want to focus on.
Thank you. I know all, all of us have spent a trial first time. Appreciate you looking at it.
Absolutely. Um, we're going on to staff reports. Is there a? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I have a couple. I've been writing out a city hall.
She's just checking right now.
I, I'm trying to.
She's trying to.
Can't read it, writing it.
Oh.
Uh, city hall office hours, council, can you talk?
Uh, so I, um, I've had a couple of people just ask about the office hours and why we're closed on Fridays. And I, uh, I think you guys have probably talked about it repeatedly. Um, but you know, we, we've reduced hours during COVID and we've never brought them back. And so, um, I would like for the council to, to direct Kim to figure out how we can get the office back open on Fridays. We keep charging the citizens more and they're getting less. And it's kind of this, uh, this idea of the whole transflation thing that's going on right now is, you know, we're, we're reducing what they're paying for. And I, I'd just like us to consider it open in the city at all.
I would like to address this, please. Please, please. Of course, we're willing to do, the count, the, the group is willing to do whatever the council wishes ultimately, but we are available Monday through Friday. The only thing that we ask is that people make appointments. I have some statements from my staff about what impact it will be for them to be open to the public on Fridays. My utility billing assistant clerk says that her phone rings off the hook a minute, two to three weeks straight, it's water to a customer. I will tell you that is exactly the pace I see. Plus the ones coming in. Um, she also handles a great deal of walk-ins, issued payments to the hall, missing rentals, all this such stuff. Um, she does the actual billing by hand. She does all this stuff. She said many weeks by Friday, she's behind. If we had foot traffic and phone calls that day, the job would be very hard to match on time. So stays Fridays that she gets a great work ethic. Um, so she says, I've done this type of work for three decades. I'm not new. I work actively efficiently. She's right. Um, our town keeps growing, so it won't get slower for sure. Um, she said that on Fridays and the same thing for the other staff. A lot of times Friday is catch-up, is doing things that you good morning do. We also try to schedule things where we might have to close the office, like our staff meetings on Friday, my staff meetings on Friday, so we don't have interruptions. The biggest thing is, is that we are clear. I heard Jim say it three times today, that if you need, she's with, somebody was there, hey, you got the rental? If you need to come in on Friday, we're closed, but just let me know and I'll be happy to let you in. Um, or make an appointment. All we're saying is that Fridays, they get, they use that time to take a breath and get caught up on paperwork. I watched Farah. She does, she does all of her filing. You know, she gets all the minutes with plenty of commission. She does all of her filing. She does the Monica Harbor she needs with the harbor staff. They do all this stuff on Fridays. However, if there is a bill, like say the bill goes out, if it goes out on Thursday, staff will often make a decision and go ahead and be open on Friday and take phone calls and take visitors because they know people want to pay bills for anybody. The day that the bills due, they're totally open. It just doesn't happen very often because they want to make sure. Diane has done this many times where she will see somebody standing up there and they look like they really need to come in, she will come out again. So, um, and we'll order them through the back way.
I love it to the back.
We just are saying that we are available if somebody really needs us, but general walk-in is a catch-up day. That's all. I think right now overtime is very managed, but when we were open Monday through Friday, overtime was getting tied because with all the interruptions from people coming in, they can't do stuff, so they couldn't on Sundays. So the choice is either we continue the way this is. Um, one of them did say, um, we have notes posted on both doors about the ability to make appointments for Friday. We've had very few, if any, appointments made. Um, normally if we do, it's become a key and we're more than willing to do that. So, um, I think that the balance is whether or not we put on this day, if everybody caught up. I will make Fridays as a catch-up day for me too. Um, there's a lot of times I just need to breathe there because I get interruptions as well or close on Friday, we don't have the interruptions. So the choice is open on Friday and yes, we can provide a little extra customer service, um, but we'll, we'll make up for it over time, I guarantee you. Um, one comment was may not have an extra staff. If you know that our administrative assistant, who was extra staff, she's, she doesn't answer phones. She's in there, so she's not available to our customers. Yeah, but we are going there.
Why is she in there?
Because we have her where we're at from.
Doesn't she share the office?
She doesn't share and that's something else I'll talk to you guys about later.
I would, I would just like to say, we, we've hired additional staff. We've, we've, as a council, we've funded the additional staff. And we've reduced the number of, of hours that the staff is available to follow. And so, um, the idea that we are um, gonna pay overtime to staff city hall when we have additional staff people that we've hired already does not make sense to me.
We do not have any extra staff we set for the admin assistant. If you know, the city has always been staff, there's a county with a city reporter, with a deputy and the, that's, that's the staff and that's who we have up front right now. Um, so, and the deputy focuses a lot on Harper, but I think if she goes to the counter and Diane will go to the counter and so will Jenny. Um, I would go to the counter if they're all busy, but if it's paying a bill, I, I, I can, so.
The level of work that they do is also increasing because, you know, they are just overwhelmed some days with just the building and keeping up with everything. And, um, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it closed for now.
I, I have, um, complaints. I think we should keep it as it is.
I'm just kidding. I mean, I love. We, I think this first started when there were two of them, maybe four people's jobs. And then we've increased salary and we've increased staff rather. But the, the work continues to get overwhelming.
Yes, the work continues to increase.
Well, maybe it's good. Maybe we can do a better job of reinforcing the fact that we don't see people to make an appointment. I'm not sure how that's feeling in the country.
Oh, we, no, Jenny, I've heard her three times today tell somebody that if you need to come in on Friday, give me a ring. Um, Diane says that oftentimes she will, um, answer calls on Friday anyway. If she does this Friday, I'll be really in some of that. So they just want to be comfortable with saying, okay. Like Diane uses Fridays a lot of times to do, um, like focus on a task that takes a lot of non-distractions. So.
Mayor, one thing that we haven't considered here is they don't work with the city council lays on city staff.
Exactly.
We've heard from the, the, uh, our administrator tonight about why this budget is, is, uh, taking so long because of all these additions and things that are going on.
And we have extra things going on like lawsuits and other things.
We have lawsuits. We have, we.
Yes, I've spent a lot of time on dealing with this recovery and having a lot of issues with that, so I respect that a little bit.
We doubled the number of meetings, uh, for the emergency preparedness committee. Uh, we, uh, considered a, a, a potential, uh, unconstitutional law tonight. I mean, it's just, it, it's just the things that this can, that, that people that were directing at the, at the staff, uh, comes from us too. I just want to say that.
I think at this time, I'll just leave it as it is. Um, and after that, I'm trying to remember your, our planner has resigned and so we do need to make some decisions on what form we're doing, um, replacing him and what your wishes are. Kim, it's overwhelming, uh, what's taking place in the city and so it is probably making us to go after a full-time planner. Because. So I think the council can decide. I definitely think we need somebody more than two days. Um, it is in light of the fact that not just the cases that are coming up, but the enforcement. So I would suggest that the city planner actually be an en, for, co-enforcer as well. To take someone out with me, um, because I'm dealing with the Sand Avenue and, and a lot of those things around the state that I'm, that I'm dealing with. So, but the planning stuff is still, and the processing of permits and the land use cases. I heard him talking today and knowing what's coming up with adopted. And so that means there's no time to do the quality of life things that everybody wants. There's no time to get the land use code updated and it is desperately needed and updating. Um, to bring it even concurrent with some laws that we have, not we, but the, the, um, the comprehensive plan. So none of that's going to get done if we keep a part-time planner. So I think the council should decide, number one, this is entirely up to you. Do you want, what, do you want a full-time? And then what does that full-time look to you? Do you want a contract planner? So I would go out for an RFP. I got a very RFP that want to give us, if we would go out and we would see like we did with, um, what, what we did with our current city. Or do you want an employee? So, um, that's really up to you. Can I? Yes.
We've, um, not had, had a great luck with planners. And I think in Kitz was the exception. And, um, you know, Larry was okay. I mean, it was a disaster. And, um, it's harder to get rid of an employee than it is a contractor that it doesn't work out. I'd like initially to contract with a planner and then we could put them on staff if, if they turn out to be an asset. I'm really, unless we have a, I mean, I guess with employees, you can build in a six-month, um.
They're, they have a probation period right off of that.
Yeah, I don't know.
All we have to do is contact our CIS folks and I have been in each of them, you know, I, you, we are not a union. We are at will as long as we.
Document.
So it's not really a problem. I just want to assure you that it wouldn't really be a problem with stuff either way. I don't care either way.
Mayor, uh, I missed the, the letter for representation. Was there something that you wrote from that?
I sent it off to everybody. Yeah.
She sent it off.
I sent it to somebody for some information. That's all he wrote. That was his letter. They don't have to give us details for an employment, but I can tell you why. I can give you some insights if you like. Because we are growing and two days a week isn't enough. And he was feeling the stress and as you all know, he was not, he's retired. He did not want to add more days. So he thought the best thing for him to do was before everything really kicked in, is to give us a chance to get somebody on board and he's just overwhelmed.
Can we do an MOU with Lincoln County or Lincoln City?
I have reached out to council of governments. There is an IDA. I did not present it tonight. We can IDA with them to, um, they have a battery rate. I forget what it is. They do provide some planning services, but they'll do the basic planning services like home process cases, building permits. They won't do any other work though. I also heard from our engineering firm who has some city planners contracted. So they would also be willing to help us out in the general. So we do have some support, so I'm not worried about us not being able to get things done because we have two great resources in our pocket. So, um, but it's just making sure that we get what, you know, we, we can't do anything extra. We can only do the basics. We can only take it. We'll, we'll have to shut planning down if it doesn't go through.
Mayor, it's not.
That's what you guys want to do.
There's a big question.
Don't worry.
Um, I, I'm not opposed to hiring a planner, but, but I think we should look at as a council is, is not combining enforcement. I think we should look at taking the enforcement, the code enforcement piece, modifying the way that we use the law enforcement component of transit logic taxes and use it for code enforcement. And I would say that in the case of this, of this planner, we should look at having a planner that has engineering as well. So that we don't have to spend, I, I was looking at the accounts payable report this time and I think we spent 22 or 23 hundred dollars in plan review is what the, uh, engineering firm said that it was for. And if we had a, a planner that had an engineering back, background, would we be sending it off to a, a consultant at whatever their assortment rates are, I think thirty thousand dollars for the linear.
That is going to be a struggle. Yeah. We, when, when you get us to be engineer and planner, you're lucky. I, I can certainly go out and try to get that. I'm happy to do it. But I think it's a harsh stretch, and we're gonna be paying more than what the range right now is for a city planner, which seems to be between seventy-five and ninety. So it's not even that much, so we're gonna be paying more.
But if they have an engineering background, the money that we're spending on the engineering firm at two or three thousand dollars a month, it wouldn't cost them.
They, they will save that much money because they can do the plan review, but they won't, that, that's a too small piece of money.
I have a question.
I'm happy to do it, I just want somebody.
Well, I, I think, I think our history has been, these people are not hard to find, I mean, they're, rather, they're hard to find. And I think we should look at all options, whether it's a full-time employee, a contractor. I think it would just need to broaden it to find the person and then determine what that person wants.
How do you do that? We only did provide us local work, we didn't have.
What we would do in that case, Madam Mayor, if I'm right, is if that's the way, the direction we go, we can certainly put out an RFP and then have discussions with that person, if we like somebody and say, would you be interested if you changed it later date? Would you be interested in equipment sometime or something like that? You can switch that conversation, you know, um, they could be very interested, or maybe they only wanna be contracted, really is going to depend on the person.
I think time is the essence critically, um, with him living and knowing what all is coming up, so whatever we need to do to move this down the road as quickly as we can.
Just tell me what you want.
I would love to see an RFP go out, or up to a full-time position.
Right.
Either contract or, you know, as a personal.
What we do in RFP would be.
It's an RFP, it's for a contract.
Right.
Right.
And then you have a conversation later, if you think you might wanna go, because we are out of employees, and you see.
July is like, it's weird.
And I do know that there are other cities right now that are looking for planners, so it could be a challenge.
Mayor, uh, there's two things that I want to hear, I've heard, one is the talent has grown, and, and we can't ignore applications, they have to be processed. But I've also heard, uh, you were mentioning quality of life issues, I get the impression there's a, a lot of other stuff, maybe there's some comprehensive planning stuff going on, or, or whatever. Now, are those, are those things that we have to do, or things that we elected to do?
No, uh, there are some things that we absolutely need to update our code on. Um, for example, sidewalks and rights and they are causing me so much headaches right now. Um, we don't require sidewalks, we don't, you know, there's just a lot of the standards that, and I talked to our engineer about it, there is a model code that oh god, D L C D is working on for small cities. Um, I don't wanna do anything massive with that, and to back comes out, so I can see what it is, it's supposed to be model director, what we have to do as a small city. But there's just a lot of things, the sign code isn't wanted, outside of the political discussion, sign code needs to be updated. Um, the, uh, like I said, streets and sidewalks are just mess, mess, messy. They're just, either it's confusing, or it's, doesn't take it far enough, or there just isn't anything in there.
A lot of really old verbiage.
A lot of old verbiage. It's not an immediate need, we, that we're not gonna fall apart if we don't do it, but there's, it's, it will become one at some point.
Let's kick down the, can't kick them again down.
We are keep, we continue to do that. So, um, I wonder, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of an RFP going out right away, and I, I would like to keep it cleaner, I understand, I'm both thinking of an engineer, but we'll be lucky, I mean, I really want an A P A plan, American Planning Association, that was what KIT was. And we saw the bump up professionalism that we really need, so we're gonna try, we should strive for that. I think having a planner and an engineer will be harder than we need to make it, I think, just let's get a good planner. But I'm hoping that we might be able to talk to KIT to see if we can just contract with them to, uh, um, help train a new planner.
He is willing, but it won't be an indefinite term, but he, he will want to say this is a set time. And I don't know what that means, he would work more, he'd still work more than two days a week, which could be problematic with training.
Well, but there, there should be some overlap.
Yeah, he said he was willing.
Okay.
Well, I heard he was willing to stay till the end of July.
Yes, but he told me, um, that, that if it came up.
Yeah.
He doesn't really want to, but he will.
Well, yeah, hopefully we'll have seven nights one morning planning in the small city. But the o, the other thing is, um, if there's an application and it's deemed complete, then the application has been, has to be acted on within a hundred twenty days, I think it is.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, hopefully, if, if we don't have a planner in place, we can accept applications.
Absolutely we can, we'll contract with the council of governments or the A K S engineering city planner folks, and let them, and we'll send the documents just like KIT does. We'll send it to them, they'll redo the review and follow the process just like he does, it just be more electronic. Actually, I think.
Do we have to accept applications?
I don't think we want to not accept them.
Well, I.
I heard it was really bad when you guys were without a planner before, and a lot of people were upset. With the building going on right now, if we do not have somebody in that role, building will stop.
Well, that might not be, if we're not, if we are not capable of having a, you know, a credible review.
But we are capable, council, right, between the experts at COG and the experts at A K S. We're, we're not, we should not be in the business of trying to put a halt to this when we can make it work. But it's ultimately your decision, and when building stops, then it would be my, my conversation that please feel free to come to the council and address the council if your concerns about why we're not.
That when building stop, I mean.
Because she's just saying we wouldn't accept any applications.
If they're complicated, if they're like planned developments.
Well, well, certainly, that, I agree with you on that, I mean, that might take more, but that, I don't know when we'll get those, I mean.
We're getting them all left and right.
But the plan development, it depends on right now, from what I understand, it's gonna be the house buildings and stuff like that, I don't know, I'll ask KIT. But I don't know if there's any, um, if you say, well, we got more, please, whatever, I don't know, please, we are, please, whatever, so. But a lot of that is just a simple plan review, and between a city planner who has ex, expertise in order, which would be through COG, and they can need to be on site because they're fairly local, and A K S, you would be able to have your plan review, and your building permit. You know, check all the boxes. Actually, to be honest, I think we can probably do the checkoff of building because we're just only looking at very standardized things, so I could probably have karma do that, so we could save some money by not doing that, because, um, that's what I've done before, where we did the basics, and then funded it off to Lady County, and they did them more complicated. But we didn't hire an engineer, it was done internally.
So we have options to keep this going.
Absolutely, we have options.
Okay.
Good.
Yes, Mayor.
Good, I have a comment on what you just said, because I was in the situation, the last part you said, just also be listening to, she's talking about adding more work to the existing staff that's already overwhelmed, it sounds like, so, that's one of those, that's how we can do it.
Of course we can.
What doesn't?
Yeah.
What? Sorry, I may, I may.
No, that's fine.
So do we need a motion or something to go off for an RFP, or?
Yes, no.
No.
You don't want me to say.
No, you just tell me you want to, but I will bring it back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll bring it back to you on July 2nd, so you guys can take it.
Look, I already have a draft.
Do we need to include, um, minimum amount of hours that they be available, or are we including how many?
Um, we can, I mean, we can say we're looking at, what do you want, the hours a week?
How much?
Uh, I think.
We want a full-time.
I think a full-time.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll just say we're looking for a full-time planner, yeah. But I'll bring it back to you.
I would say thirty-two to forty.
We want your flexibility, that's fine.
It's your flexibility, I think we want to get a planner on board, right? And whatever flexibility we could build into our contract, I don't know.
We can do that, but we, we want a full-time planner.
How many hours was KIT working on that?
Sixteen per day, a week, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Plus ratings and.
Plus occasional news, so twenty-four, I think it was, in the contract, I definitely get it, but I think he had it, was like a minimum on time.
So we're gonna go from a twenty-four hour contract to a full-time contract, is what you wanna do?
I think we need it, the city needs it, it's not what I wanna do, it's what the city needs, if you wanna accomplish things you wanna accomplish. Otherwise, we just stick on processing land use cases.
Well.
And that is totally fine, I mean, that is fine as well.
I just don't have it in paper, that's my concern. I mean, we're talking about doubling the, the expense, and, uh, we don't seem to have a revenue stream that goes with it.
But we need it.
Well, I remember last time that, um, we weren't charging, um, our, a building permit fees, or that we weren't charging for the engineering that was done.
No, we are. No, we are.
So that.
But they have not had time to do the final accounting, which is something I could get from them by the end of July. Carter tells me it's been a while since he's done any of final accounting. So that we could be sitting on money out there, that should be coming to us, and I need them to do that.
But if you want a sign ordinance, or you want a, 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 a master plan, can't we take those as individual things above and beyond this planner who's working twenty-four hours a week? And figure out a way to tackle those, like a sign ordinance, give it to the lawyer, say, lawyer, we want a side ordinance.
You are gonna be paying a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour for anything you do. It's true, can we do it? Absolutely, like, you're not gonna save any money that way.
Well.
We're not gonna pay a planner.
Your side ordinance is gonna cost X amount to do, you're just not gonna have, have it being done by this, uh, this, this full-time person. And, and I, I think there's value in taking each project and saying, this is what it's gonna cost, and, uh, and, and moving forward on it. Other, because I think what's gonna happen is you got a full-time planner down there, we're just gonna start throwing all sorts of stuff at him, and, uh.
Like what?
Name it.
Well, first of all, they were.
You know, we've got comprehensive plan, let's redo our comprehensive plan, let's, let's, let's go through the ordinances, all the planning ordinances. Let's, uh, do a sign ordinance, let's do this, let's do that, and it's just, uh.
Let's do a tree ordinance, let's do a, uh, night dark sky ordinance, let's do a lighting ordinance, let's do.
Well, just take them.
All of these ordinances that you all want, somebody who's still. And right now, there's nobody to do it. We can, we can send them all to the attorney, and he'll charges, be happily charging us a hundred and twenty-five an hour. That's what it's for.
Well, you know, you can also research what other cities have done, you know.
I know what other cities have done, I have a full-time planner.
And I don't mean you, yeah.
Your head is like, are you giving him the sick eye?
No. We, we talk a lot about money and making money, saving money, we've also talked about having some job of work, and putting a lot of this on the table. Saying we think that we save money here in general.
Or have, or have to increase revenue. We haven't had that worked up yet, and there are, I have a great speaker who's willing to come here and tell you guys how to do it.
Um, that's what I have to mention.
Some question.
Yeah.
Um, on the accounts payable at the beginning of the, the one that we recorded, there were three projects in particular that were, um, they looked like they were just for residential addresses, that had engineering services on them, it was like twenty, I believe, twenty-three hundred dollars.
Yes.
Is what you just said, that we're going to turn around and rebuild that twenty-three hundred dollars back to the individual owners of each of those properties?
Absolutely. So what happens is I give KIT the receipt, so we get all of our copies, okay, then I email him the copy of the plan review, or G R review, or anything that the, our city engineers doing, that we can reimburse for, I send it to him, and he would write a bill, and he would say, okay, our deposit is, I won't write a number, I don't know what I'll bring up, let's say our deposit is three, five thousand, okay? Then you apply the permit fees, then you apply staff time, they calculate how much staff time. Then you say, okay, well, this bill is twenty-three hundred for the plan review, there, it goes into the pot. So that just hasn't been done in a while.
So, we built a house here.
Mm-hmm.
And I can tell you, I did not pay for any engineering services, nobody ever billed me back for any engineering services. I paid however many dollars per square foot, and that was it, that I paid to the city.
That things have changed since then.
And so, um, this would be news to me that we're now charging for all of that stuff, so.
Geo text was something really recently approved by the planning commission, and plan review fees have always been built in ordinance. Nobody's ever just really pushed to have them done, and as a result of that, we've had some issues.
So, this is in our ordinance, but it hasn't been done?
Plan review?
No, the, the, the charges.
The geo check, yes, the geo check is new, the fees were done, they just haven't done it in a while. Meaning that when I came on board in August of twenty-twenty-two, they were billing, I had a stack, I had a group of bills that they hadn't sent out, that they did, I'm assuming there's probably another stack, because I have not seen any bills come out. So when I talk to them next week, I'll be saying, before you leave, please do these accounting. Then I can come back to let you know, please don't apply all of these charges against it per ordinance, per code, and we'll see where we are, whether the deposit's enough or not, how we're gonna get money back, so. I would like to eventually change the fee structure, so all of that's included, and we don't have to, we say, all right, it's gonna be an average of twenty-three hundred to do a plan review. That's part of the fee. Okay, um, we know staff time is gonna take an hour planner time, boom, that's part of the fee. That's the way a lot of cities do it, they don't do the manual labor.
Which, which gets received, yeah.
Right, they don't do the manual labor of doing what he's doing, which is writing on the inside of a folder, tracking how many hours they're working. It's very labor intensive.
So the bottom line here is we're doing an RFP for somebody that's thirty-two to forty hours a week.
Uh, is that the bottom line, thirty-two to forty hours a week? Okay, uh, with an A P A, and I'll bring it back to you, you guys can.
Okay.
Okay, um, project updates, has everyone reviewed those? Any questions for staff on down?
I have a question.
Yes.
How do we get that color of the water tone? And what can be done about it? Can you have somebody airbrush over a different color that would have the structural, the test again?
Well, that was the, so we, yeah, we got a quote for fifty thousand, so.
It was a hundred and fifty thousand, but all hopped around to fifty.
Hundred fifty thousand dollar. And they had that green because of that green, but there, we can always have somebody with a mural or something, I mean, Gary Hall.
I don't want, I just want like airbrushing over it, just like tone down, like make it more brown or whatever, it's, it's just.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a Kelly green.
It's really, it's, it's really offensive.
Um, we could get, we could find out who could do it, get a quote, bring it back to him, so he can decide if he wants to spend the money to do it. It won't be our staff doing it.
No, it's only one face that needs one face in the town that you come in.
I had some staff members say, can we do D B, like G, on Gary Hall? I said, no, I don't think so.
They're not true.
My, my trees, well, like, no, I never wanted to be, uh.
Yeah.
I said, if we were to put anything on it, it would be a way out there, they're not gonna put anything on it, no. No, I told him that, I was just testing him.
Any other?
Um, the, the pump out, uh, we were gonna get some usage of, of that piece of equipment, and then determine whether the, uh, whether the price was worth the, I, I, I think you updated the price.
Yeah, it went down to eight thousand, too.
If the equipment's not being used, is it legally required that they have it?
Yes.
Yeah, because we have to pump the sewer out of those.
And we have to leave it, so they do use it, I'm told they do, but if you want, how much do you, you try.
Yeah, otherwise they'll dump it in the park harder, I mean, it's not, they dump their sewage.
I believe, I believe in meeting one or two of those, they said it wasn't being used much.
I don't know who said that, but.
Not in the winter, but in the summer.
Not in the winter, but in the summer. So if you guys have to run it every once in a while, they have to keep it fresh, but I will ask Roy tomorrow to get, because I, I apologize, council, I did forget, to, to, I think he wrote it down, right, they're writing a log on it?
Yeah, we do, keep a log for, for the marine board.
Right, because the marine board comes down. By the way, speaking of the marine board, we had a visit from the marine board today, they say he will be getting another gold star for being a clean.
Clean marine.
Awesome, right.
Clean marine, I agree.
And he's, he's saying he thought it looked great, thought it really looked great, because that's Brian and Roy who have been working down there. It did a lot, Brian, our, our seasonal guys, they're amazing, and, uh, so, so, yeah, so as soon as we get that, I'll share that. But I'll ask him to get a copy that log, I apologize if you forget that.
The other one was the, um, the quotable, uh, culinary wealth project. And, uh, it said that we were gonna be testing in spring of twenty-twenty-four in April.
Yeah, so we.
And so I just wondered if that was done.
We've got, we have a new compliance officer, and we've been waiting for him to come down with a meeting for us to on-site. But it's, it's, uh, actually not, we don't drink directly after well, it will be sent as raw water. So, but we do need to do the testing to it, um, we did early testing for colicar, and any kind of, uh, S, what's our, uh, there's S O, S O, uh, there's different, um, there's, there's volatiles that we test for, and we did test for that, it was mania. But we need to do the whole spectrum of constituents in the water, but that's happening. And we did test for that was mandated, but we need to do the whole spectrum of constituents in the water, but that's happening.
Okay, um, the Bay Street project, um, I don't have copies of that design. Were they sent to the councilors?
Uh, they hadn't had the final design. In fact, they still don't have a final design. When I took, when I want to go drive with him to go look at through these places, he was driving down Bay Street and it was a busy Friday, right? So he was like, I think we need to redo that.
Oh, so the the note says it's reviewed and approved and I just didn't know. I I'd never seen anything.
Oh, I'll I'll send you the draft, but he's not done yet.
Okay.
Yeah, cause we got approved for the grant and the.
Well, the grant, yeah.
But not the.
Yeah.
And then those those heart bridge replacements, um, it says we're going out to bid in June. So here we are, uh, mid, mid-June.
Yeah, I have a meeting with him tomorrow. I asked him, I said, are you sure we're gonna go out to bid in June? And he said, I'll try myself. He said, yes.
Okay. But. It said the work was beginning in July one, so that doesn't give people an awful long time to do this.
To be approved.
Yeah. And that's all I have on that. Thanks.
Any other questions? And Kim, do you wanna go so the, or dis-certify public manager?
Yes, um, so this is something new that's been introduced to Oregon by the Smithfield College. They got a, they got permission to put this program into place um, for the public administration. So I think you saw that they have that, what is that other one, improvement or whatever, but, um, the public administration is a good workshop. It's all virtual. It was gonna start soon. The bounce gonna start to July. So I, it's part of, I, it's part of what we put in the budget for training. So, um, I just wanted you to know about it and make sure.
It's for you.
Hmm, it's for me, yeah. They did ask me to spend it around, but I I, nobody has really shown an interest in stepping into my role. Should I leave at some point? I retire. So there wouldn't be, the only person that I'm kinda considering is Gina, but she needs to get a little more into that and maybe she's not interested, so. We haven't had that conversation yet, have we, Gina?
So you need approval?
I just need your blessing if it's okay for me to do it.
In your spare time?
Well, it's in September.
Okay.
So it's over the winter. She'll be quiet.
So this is, this is, um, what I'm concerned about, right? Cause you said, oh, it's in the budget, but.
Training is in the budget.
Right.
Not that specific thing, but it's just general training. I don't know what I'm gonna wanna do. Some of the training would be like if I attended a workshop on.
No, no, I I did that. That's not where I was going. Where I was going was if there's something in the budget, um, and then we need to authorize the expenditure for for it, for this this thing.
Right, right. The budget committee approved the budget for the amounts that were placed into education and training being a trial. If the council wishes to change those amounts during the adoption, then you're pretty good at that.
No, no.
But I I can't, I, let me rephrase it. I can bring everything to you that I am asking to be in the budget. I can do that. Uh, that's a lot of, a lot of things to just say.
So that's what we were just saying. Oh, we just have it in the budget just in case, but it would come back to the council before we actually spend.
It's it's a procurement thing. This is under this, the procurement policy allows the city recorder administrator to to authorize expenditures up to ten thousand dollars without putting back the capital. I have to go through it. It's over five thousand. I have to go through the three quotes and stuff like that. That's in the procurement. I'm I'm bringing this to you as a, I don't wanna sound mean and you're free to to correct me, but I didn't have to bring it to you because it is budgeted, meaning that the money is budgeted, whether or not it's this thing or it's two conferences or whatever.
But see, that, okay, I I just wait, so I don't wanna, but we were told, for example, um, oh, but we're not gonna have to pay. Just because we budget for sheriff, we don't, we don't have to get one. This is just in there just in case, but it'll come back to the council. That's not a procurement.
The budget, you guys are going to approve the money in the line items in the budget, whatever that looks like. If you choose not to fund the sheriff, all you have to say is we don't wanna fund the sheriff. But if you approve the budget, you're approving whatever money is in there minus your adjustments. You can make adjustments to anything you want. These are estimates. If you don't want to put four thousand in for the sheriff, you say, I don't wanna put four thousand in for the sheriff. Everybody agrees. Four thousand goes away. It just stays a while. Assuming you still want a while.
Yeah, I think the sheriff is a different, different because it's contract.
But this, it's. Right, but this.
The council has to approve a contract, but.
This is like me spending money on electric. This is like me spending money on trash. This is like me spending money on staples. This is like me spending money on, help me out here, what other things we were spending money on?
Digital toilet paper.
Yes.
Toilet paper, supplies, uh, spending money on, um, anything.
Yes.
I can bring it all back to you, but once you approve a number in the budget, you're telling me that you hold me responsible for keeping to this budget once the budget's adopted. Maybe I don't understand where you're coming from, but I I'm very confused right now.
We were just told that, don't worry about putting something in the budget. We can make the decision later. It's just a just in case.
And I just. And.
And it'll come back to the council before we spend money.
That is not what I said, Council Rec. That is only on particular items. For example, the bond agreement, we put the ten thousand in there. If you wanna spend more, I come back to you and I ask you, but that's not the same thing as budgeting a line item and putting money in for training and put money in for meeting and trial.
Okay, so let me ask this question. About the bond, as a, as a classic example, there's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in professional services.
Mm-hmm.
Are you saying that you could have made that decision to hire that bond attorney without council's approval to spend whatever that bond person wanted to charge up to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars?
No.
So what's the difference between doing that and what's?
Okay, so here, here, okay, so here's where I'm going here. What I'm hearing is you don't trust me to manage the budget.
That's level.
That's not what I was saying.
Say again. What I'm hearing that you don't trust me to manage the budget because you're saying that you can't trust me to say, if you say ten thousand, that we're gonna stay on ten thousand. Or if we approve the, um, audit to stay at, uh, thirty thousand, that you're not trusting me to stay there, that you want me to bring all this back to you before we do this.
I wanna understand which things come back to us and which things don't. So if we put something in a budget and it's not gonna come back to us, then it needs a little bit more scrutiny before we put it in the budget.
Um, I will, it it will be everything. Because I am not telling you everything I spent as far as on utilities, as far as all this. See, I think this is very new to me. I did not hear any of this last year. So maybe something's changed, but I hear a lack of trust in my ability to manage the budget.
That's not true.
Uh, that's what I hear because here has to be to bring everything back to you. If it's the amount in the budget and I say it's in the budget, you want me to bring it back to you if it's three thousand five hundred dollars.
You wanna understand which things come back to us and which things don't.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're just confused a little bit.
Okay, so what comes back to you are the things that are over twenty five, over ten thousand. That's what comes back to you. You you all have a procurement policy, right?
But that's procurement.
Yeah, it's the same thing. Services don't go through a procurement policy. So when I contract to get toilet paper, they do not go through a procurement policy.
Right.
Contracting to build a bridge, contracting to, um, um, to put, uh, contracting to, um, put a fence in, contracting to put a walkway in, that's all over ten thousand. That's under your purview. I bring things to you because I want you to know what's going on.
And we appreciate it.
Well, everything comes to us anyway because we get a, you know, we get a printout or a check.
And you get the A P and you get all the reports. Yes, correct.
So I I don't think we're, I I don't think we're, we we trust you and and it's all transparent as, uh, as far as I can tell. Uh, Mayor, I think this is a great idea. I told him this was a great idea. I like seeing, this, this is a great curriculum here. And all you're saying is that we've got the bu- money in the budget to do this, right?
This would be my training for twenty.
This doesn't need to be a line item in the budget.
No, it's just under meetings, uh, training.
Training.
So I'm, I I also have a problem is can we move forward on this?
All right. It is approved. Um, any closing public comments, is that it? Uh, I think nobody's jumping up to that one. Council comments, who wants to start with the council briefly? Do you do council comments?
I just had a couple of things. One is I had a passing conversation with the owner of the Shell station. Asked him the community about that Berlin building, which is his neighbor up there. And he said he tried to buy it. He said, well, the price was great. Problem is there's, uh, a hundred thousand dollars in back taxes that have to be paid and there's no paperwork. That's the big issue. Is, uh, there's just no paperwork that shows who actually owns that building. It's one of those kinda screwy cases. So that, so that's my report on that. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I submitted for the record tonight a packet of information that I had on this signage issue. And, uh, what it consists of are various entities spelling out the ledoo, the Reed and the Gilio decisions of the Supreme Court. Uh, and I think if you just take a few minutes, you just scan that, take a yellow pin to it, you'll, it it's, it's, it's really informative. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Selberg?
Yeah, they just go live to the council.
They did. They were eating down with them. Is that the president out right? I can go on.
Um, I just have a couple of things. Um, I've been noticing a plethora of plastic downtown as far as bags are concerned. And so I'm looking at House Bill twenty five oh nine to see if there's anything we can do as a city on just all of that plastic. The the businesses, there's two or three of them down there that are using plastic bags for the merchandise. And so we have a, we have a plastic bag van and I just need to kinda look and see what we can do as a city. And then, um, there are, I just wanted to make you all aware that there are a number of businesses here in town that are working together to establish some kind of a new business association. We're, um, we're looking to perhaps do, um, a the Eco Bay Business Association, a Visitors Bureau or something like that. We've had an initial meeting. We've got another one scheduled for later here in June where we hope to be able to pull together, um, a complete set of mission statements, um, bylaws, five oh one C, et cetera, so.
Yes, Marcela, um, Carrie knew with Real Up Eco Excursions is, would it be okay if I give you your contact information? She would like to talk to you about that.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we, um, we actually have somebody that's gonna, that's taking flyers to every downtown business, so.
So that's the idea. Okay, great. Yeah, she loves the idea. So she's very excited.
Yeah.
That would be good.
And then the last thing I have is, um, ODOT has two programs for E B chargers. Uh, we've participated in one of those programs, which was their community charging rebate program, which they provide cash back seventy five percent of the cost. Uh, the other twenty five percent could be utilized out of transient lodging. Um, and so I think, uh, or transient, the the tourist tax component of that, and I think we should consider a a project in the future, uh, that would get us some E B cut charging in some of our public parking lots. Um, so that's the first one is the community charging rebate program that that I've used personally. They've rebated it. It was, it was great. Uh, the other one is they have a carbon reduction program. And so I think that between one or two or both of those programs, we should be able to get chargers in town for people to go to. And to help reduce our carbon program.
I was just curious, when people use one of these chargers, who pays for the electricity?
Yeah, so you can do it both ways. Um, you can charge, you can actually have them scan a barcode and then they pay to to use the charger. Or there's a lot of, uh, membership kinds of, uh, groups where they pay a fee every month and they can use those chargers. Um, we actually have them scan a barcode and then they have to pay for the electricity. The the ODOT program is very specific. You can't gouge, you know, you gotta be, cost of the electricity plus a little bit for admin. Um, and they do require reporting. So, you know, so it's, uh, you have to be able to pull data and send them recording and that kind of stuff. But that's one way. There are other cities that just give it away for free, I guess.
I I just wanna make sure it's not another Doc Field, the Oscar field.
Well, the council went through that one and I saw that material. Remember you guys talked about doing that?
Yeah.
And I think the difference was whether you hired, was it women, did test with folks or somebody, whether, not the test, it's.
No, it was some. At the organization, you know, we're gonna put it just for free and then they get the.
Yeah, yeah. Then they get the, yeah, yeah.
Right.
We got to that.
Yeah. Which is, I think, is why you guys ultimately decided not to go with it.
I think we were waiting to put the Coa parking lot, or not the Coa.
Uh, Slinkah.
Slinkah.
Slinkah, but that's not really centrally located.
We're, um, I'm hoping to see more activity in that parking lot. We're not seeing a lot in that parking lot right now. Okay, let's see more. Uh, we are a jerk. Tonight, Gina?
Oh, she's gone.